Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our second session of the budget. And we are up to infrastructure and development, and Amanda Pollak is here with us. And the floor is yours.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll give a brief overview first and then get into a little bit of specifics. So, infrastructure and development is six orgs. Our first one is Org 19,000, which is our planning department. We have Org 25,100, which is building permits and inspections. We have Org 60850, which is our stormwater utility, the stormwater implementation portion, not street sweeping. And then there are three different engineering orgs. A general fund engineering, which is 31,000, water engineering, which is 81080, and sewer engineering, which is 84080. So, all of our staff is out of five of those six accounts. The stormwater account doesn't have any staff. For the most part, our operating accounts are pretty straightforward. It's mostly office-related and staff-related expenses. There are some important changes to point out for this year, and the biggest change is this really finalizes the split of public works. So, when you look at any of the kind of the backup spreadsheets, especially for those three engineering accounts, you'll see in medical, telephone, cell phones, where we took out what was once part of Field Ops and Department of Water Works. So, it's not insignificant. Altogether, that was $65,000 that came out and then reallocated to those accounts. Additionally, there was GIS money that also moved towards GIS. So, things like the trailer at Field Operations that houses the senior leadership team, that had been previously in those engineering accounts. So, the alarm system, janitorial, the just building maintenance, has all now moved to Field Operations. So, you'll hear that from them in the afternoon. We all coordinated to make sure we knew what we were taking out of these accounts. They took those funds in. So, really, that's the biggest changes in the operating accounts, is that shift of funding. We have in infrastructure and development, there's one essential item for consideration, and that is eliminating one of our engineering tech positions to add in what we're calling a transportation project specialist. And when we were Public Works, there was a project manager that handled the high level, all the transportation projects. So, I've modeled this position after that. There was a staff in an engineering tech position that would be an appropriate person to handle this. So, this is everything with our paving, curb gutter sidewalks, all coordination with the State Highway Administration, Salisbury University, coordination with new bike paths, bike lanes, cycle tracks. Anytime we need to change a speed limit, rename a street, change the direction, eliminate parking, add parking, everything would funnel through that position. So, we had it in Public Works with the reorg last year. It became apparent after a few months, there is a void. You know, we don't have the same person to really help with, especially the legislation and, you know, working with people on the ground to say, "Oh, okay, yeah, you'd like a consideration of a speed limit here. Let's do a speed study, and then I'll get back to you." So, that is our essential item, is it's a new position, but we would be eliminating one to add that. It is a change in grades, but it was, you know, it's not just a totally new position.
Can I stop you for a second and just ask a question?
Sure.
So, with the reorganization, has the, is the budgeted amount from the previous year adjusted to the new organizational structure?
Well, the good news is, is as you may recall, the orgs didn't change.
Right.
So, everything flows.
Okay.
Compared, the comparison in that way is so, but there's a few twists and turns. For example, she moved cellphone reimbursement, let's just, as an example, let's say previously it was being paid out of one org, and she put it on the list of, "I don't need to pay this anymore," and then they started paying that out of another account.
So, that'd be like the GIS.
Mm-hmm.
That would be an example of that.
Exactly.
So, while the org stayed constant, some of the practices of where some expenses are paid were removed, and that's going to throw some comparisons out of whack.
In terms of the personnel as well?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
If you took the total and the total last this year?
Right.
What's the delta?
So, actually, most of the personnel were in the right places last year.
Okay.
We only had a couple of folks still to move. Our administrative assistant was still out of her, she split, as we all are, out of the three engineering accounts, but her water and sewer accounts were different accounts. They were the resource management, so we made that change.
Okay.
The only still kind of holdover is GIS, where he was split out of, I believe, all three accounts, but I don't think that the general fund could absorb his entire salary, so portions of GIS, the assistant GIS, I'm not sure if it's named director maybe, is still coming out of the engineering accounts on water and sewer, which is fine.
But the heads are still the same?
Yes, yeah. The heads are still the same. So, for the most part, yeah, the staff is split. To echo Keith's point, our medical accounts, for example, in those three engineering accounts, were all of Public Works' medical needs, so it was all drug testing, all DOT testing, everything. So, it's been nice to have this year to track for each of us, infrastructure development, water works, and Field Ops, what do we need for our medical accounts? So, we have that sorted, and now you'll see, I think for Field Ops, they've added those into each of their branches.
Okay.
So, streets will have one, and parks will have one, correct me if I'm wrong. So, for us, we're keeping them in our three engineering, but you'll see that especially with Field Ops and Water Works.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to bring up while I was here is Schedule B, the capital improvements projects. If there were any questions to that, it reflects what you've seen recently when you...
Yeah, it's up there.
Yep. When you approved the capital improvements plan, but since we do administer those, I thought that was a good time to bring up Schedule B as well, in case there were any questions of things on here. I'll try to answer anything that you have. Main Street Master Plan is funded, if you want to scroll down a little bit. Yeah, there you go. The Main Street Master Plan is the next phase, so those are Phase 1, which is the Plaza, and then Phase 3, which is North Division Street. And we had received a million-dollar grant from the state, which showed up this year in FY '18, so that million-dollar grant is for those phases. And then we had also received a $100,000 grant from Community Legacy for streetlights, which had been previously accepted as well. We're funding the continuation of the bicycle master plan. And then the urban greenway implementation includes the pedestrian bridge at the end of Camden Street towards the New Riverside Circle. So, that is the design and construction of that pedestrian bridge, is in the urban greenway implementation line.
The Main Street Master Plan?
Yes.
None of the, is there any impact from the, for instance, when we stopped for the Folk Festival, that period? Does that impact any of the dollars that would push them further out? Or no?
No, not necessarily. What, we're still trying, planning to bid those next two phases together, and so we're bidding them together, and we'll award those in FY '19.
Okay, so they'll be awarded?
They will be awarded next year. So, there may be that by the fall of 2019, there is a shutdown where they clean up and then finish. They probably won't be finished, depending on, you know, we won't start this year until after the first Folk Festival. It'll lag a little bit, but not enough that we felt like we needed to award another contract in the next phase.
Any other questions? Okay.
That really summarizes our accounts.
Keith, do you have any comments about the split of this, of the money?
Of course, the funding. Most of this lines up pretty straightforward, as far as where it belongs. So, I think we've been over it quite a bit and have it, have them in the right slots.
I think you answered my questions pretty quick. Let me just get to them.
Sure.
So, that's where she goes.
On the personnel side, they were talking about step increases in the personnel, right?
Yes.
So, are there step increases?
You mean from a career ladder standpoint? Not at this time, no. So, you'll, right now, we didn't have anybody eligible for that in the upcoming year, and you will be seeing me presenting a project engineer career ladder, which is one that we don't have right now. There is essentially an entry-level project engineer, and then we have a senior project engineer position, which currently is not filled and is not even vacant. So, what I would like to do, and I've been starting to work on it, is to have a project engineer 1, 2, 3, so that as they get professional licenses or hit some major milestones, then we do have a career ladder there, so, but otherwise, we don't have any eligible.
That answers my, sort of answers my second question, is in the fire service, there are specialties, engineer positions that, you mentioned certification.
Yes.
Are, so are those specialized to the person's field?
Yes, so especially for project engineers, as you see after my name, it's PE, professional engineer. That's our biggest certification and what any engineer is striving for, but before that, there's one called EIT, Engineer in Training, or Fundamentals of Engineering Licensor. So, our basic entry-level project engineer does not require that. So, maybe the project engineer 2 level would require the fundamentals of engineering to be passed, and then a project engineer 3 would require a PE. That gives someone something to strive for, and then when you're preparing for and taking these very difficult exams, that really gives you something to say, "Okay, if I can pass this, you know, I can go to this level." But in addition to that, we wanted to put some milestones on managing certain-sized projects and, you know, being in control of budget schedule, you know, some other things, quantitative things, working on a variety, you know, our projects range from water, sewer, stormwater, roads, traffic, sidewalks, so making sure that to go between the levels, you experience the wide variety of projects, that you're not just doing one thing. So, that's also something we're trying to build in.
Now, the PE, is that the similar to when I was in school, when we had Blackboards? I'd say that before you commented on it, but where you could take, you had to take the initial exam when you were in school or right after it, and then you have to wait five, is it five years?
Yeah, it's four years. So, that initial exam, Fundamentals of Engineering, you can take when you're in school, and actually, even back when I was in school, I had a professor junior year that really encouraged us to take it. He said, "You're juniors, there's no pressure, don't study, you're in the middle of taking all these classes, go take it." So, my friends and I did that, and most of us passed junior year. You couldn't become an engineer in training officially until you graduated from college.
Right.
So, once you graduate, then you have to work under a professional engineer for four years before you could sit for the PE exam. And that's a very long, difficult exam, all day long, and, you know, tested on everything that you would need to know for your major, but yeah, it's a four-year waiting period if you graduated from an accredited university. Non-accredited university is a longer waiting period.
You got to answer my questions. Do you have any questions?
Okay, great, well, thank you.
Good, excellent. Thank you, Amanda.
Sure.
Thanks again for finding that money. Mr. Rudisil, I'm sorry, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Can you hear okay, Hardy? Should I call Mike?
Yeah, actually, I can hear very well.
Great.
Good.
Who's coming for another dollar?
Okay, we're back now, and we're going to be doing finance. And before I forget, Mr. Rudisil is participating, for those at home, Mr. Rudisil is participating by phone. He's traveling. Hopefully, he'll keep his mind on the road, and we'll proceed now with finance.
Okay, the first thing to convey about finance this year, we had, expense-wise, the biggest expense change was we had $10,000 invested in munis training to accomplish a few projects this year, to implement some capabilities that we didn't have in the past. So, that was an essential item that got approved. Otherwise, we had some organizational changes, finalizing the career ladder that had started the last couple of years. This should, should, as we know it, finish the career ladder for us. It's really tweaking it in a very good, it puts it in a very good place. And I'm going to highlight some of those differences as we go through it. The first thing, the utility billing supervisor went from grade 6 to grade 7. That puts them on par with people that have been here for a similar period of time and have similar technical skills, so they'll be on the same level as the revenue supervisor and the accounts payable 2. So, that was a great accomplishment there. Otherwise, the two reports that are the utility billing clerk, as they stay with the city over the years, they become more valuable. Actually, a 1 is how you come in, a 2 is after that you have a couple of years of training, you become more valuable, so you get an upgrade there. A 3 is when you're starting to have all of the skills as a supervisor. If the supervisor was not here, you have the redundancy of a person that could perform their functions. So, having a 1, 2, and 3 accomplishes a lot here in the utility billing area. Revenue clerk collections, similar thing. We had a 1 and a 2. Now, if you continue to stay with the city, you pick up some of the skills of the supervisor so that if they're absent, you have the redundancy, we pay you for that. You can graduate to a 3 if you meet those qualifications. The same happened for the parking clerks that are taking care of the parking financial So, those are the highlighted changes. We also were able to bring the assistant directors up a grade. We've been talking about that for three or four years now, and we were finally able to do that. So, it keeps our leadership bench in a good place. Otherwise, it's not shown on this org chart, but towards the end of the budget process, the administration decided to move the grant manager and the grant coordinator from community development with an ACDD to finance, and they'll report directly to the assistant director of finance operations. So, that's the, that change also occurred. That's not reflected in this chart, as you see it right here.
Where would that, which one?
Right here, on this, on the left side. Unfortunately, it's the same one that has the most reports, but we will do some rebalancing here, maybe, as that, since that happened at the last minute. We have plans to perhaps move parking or accounts payable over here to balance that out.
Yeah, because it's a little lopsided.
A little lopsided. Yeah, there's a lot of GL accounts over here that you don't see. In other words, so over here, you got GL accounts.
It's volume.
Yeah, volume, and you've got people over here. So, one's operation, one's accounting.
Gotcha.
But the skills are still, the overall load is pretty balanced, but bringing in that grant activity is just enough that we want to rebalance, yes, and we'll take care of that. We had quickly, our Sandy volunteered without even us asking, you know, said, "We need to, we need to balance that."
Good. It's good. It's good. All right. Questions? All right.
So, that's pretty much our summary.
Let's see if I have.
Okay.
No, I didn't have anything on that. Do you have anything? Okay, thank you. Keith, good. Just glance, good to see you.
Good to be here, thank you.
All right, who's up now, or is anybody here? Okay, while we're waiting for the next group to come in, we're going to look, we're going to take some time to look at the CIP and the debt, relative to debt, and Keith is going to drive the train now.
Okay, to walk us through, the first category is public safety, and the first item was replacing the fire station 1's roof for $102,000. We had, we had the chiller at the police department for $300,000. Now, as far as bonded debt...
Mr. Rudisil?
Yep.
The ones we're talking about now are all under-bonded.
Yeah, all under-debt.
These are all bonded debt.
Yeah. Then we go down to the ones that Amanda just walked us through, all these. And we had the bridge maintenance that she didn't discuss, and then the streetscaping for 206. And that was a total of $8,885,000.
Okay.
And that's what's scheduled in the general capital projects. Jumping over to, while we're here, talking about debt, we can, we can look at, this is the older one. We were eight, so initially, we had, on the first pass, we were able to take all of these projects for $795,000, and we repurposed money for other projects that were, had leftover.
Right.
And then we were able to do another pass, and we were able to find another $755,000, so that we did all of the projects that were scheduled in CIP with no additional debt at all this year in water sewer. I think that might be the second year. I'm pretty sure we did that last year, too. We were able to go with new debt.
Yeah, I think it was close.
Yeah, so...
But that's great, excellent. That is really good.
Really nice. Not the same story about the parking fund. We did have a condition study that found that bearing pads need to be replaced, and it was a significant cost of $400,000. So, that's a biggie.
How much, just refresh for everybody, could you refresh? What's, what's coming off the debt? Is there anything that's...
There's not too much that's coming off the debt this year.
Not this year. What's the projection? Do you know roughly what the projection is for coming up for reduction?
Oh, on the future payment.
On the future payment.
Yeah, I can, I can pull that schedule up for you in a few minutes and email it to you if you'd like.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, but there's not, not much on general capital. In the general fund, there's very little coming off until like 2024. I mean, it's, it's pretty steady, as far as everything that's on there. So, we'll be adding, and very little will be coming off.
Okay. Okay, you sent me that, then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, that's, that's the run-through as far as the debt is being added.
Pretty straightforward.
Yes.
It's good news, the fact that we are not incurring any debt on the top is...
Yeah, at a quick glance, just to see where we are in water sewer while we're here, and kind of talking about that, I'm going to bring up the schedule we use every year to keep track of where we are with the use of surplus and everything. So, this is the water sewer worksheet, and you can see at the, at the mayor level, we had budgeted to use $1.793 million, and since then, because we were able to reallocate those bond funds, we were able to get about $80,000 of reduction, $81,000 of reduction in cost.
That's significant dollars.
And that's every, you know, that's every year, you know, that's for a long period. We've already, so we've already, we're already making those payments, they're already built in, so that brought us down to about, about $1,712,000 as far as our use of surplus, which, as we all know, based on our variance history, should result in no use of surplus.
Right. So, we've got three years roughly before we start to see any significant decrease in the debt.
And again, we're talking, we always have to talk separately, when we, when I said that, I was talking general fund.
General fund.
Now, we're into water sewer.
Correct.
And it has its own, it has its own future, future payment schedule, and I'll provide both.
Yeah, I've got to switch it in my head because I...
Yeah, just switch gears, yeah, we switch gears.
Yeah. $87,000 is no, is no chunk of change. That's good stuff. Just tell Amanda, keep looking. All right, I guess we'll go offline until the next group shows up. Open the windows.
Or fan.
All right, we're back, we're going to, next on the list is water and sewer, and Keith's going to take us through that. Julia? And Allison?
Start with Keith.
Start with Keith.
Good old Keith.
First up would be what you've already learned, that we did have an 8% increase. That 8% increase, effective October 1st, the, is quantified at $913,000 of revenue. That's what's plugged in, plugged in as an adjustment at the mayor level. So, we've already discussed that...
Can we, can we talk about that?
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about that.
The mayor and I had a discussion, and matter of fact, we talked about what would be the impact if we took, if we took it down to 4. Obviously, we don't become healthy in the pool as, until later, but 8% in my opinion is too high.
The trashy pickup fees also come up this year, 2%.
Yeah, yeah. Did, has the mayor made any decisions or...
Not that I'm aware of, and I wasn't, I apologize, I wasn't in council on Monday night to hear that discussion.
Yeah, he actually stated on Monday that we were looking at possibility, and then we had heard the discussions, and I think, I don't think that the impact of doing it for, for, or for whatever next year, I don't think, I know it doesn't, we don't get to the point in the surplus that we want to get to, but I think from a practical point of view, considering the fact that we have fee increase, and still not hold on the transportation.
So, that would be, on average, an $8 increase if we went to 4%?
I believe it's, it was 16 a quarter, it was 16 at 8, and I believe it would be 4.
Yeah, I thought you said 10 at the press conference.
I think that might, it was the average.
And Keith, do you know how many years it would take to be, here he is, solvent there?
I think it's three. Oh, he knows.
Oh, he wouldn't have something.
Good lunch. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Hey.
Mayor, how are you?
Good.
Good. We're talking about sewer.
We're in weeds.
Okay, we're in the weeds.
In the weeds.
Actually, we're below the weeds.
That is the spot to be. Especially on a day when they announced that sea grasses have come back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll slide a little bit.
We just, we just asked to put in, plug in 4, just to see what the impact is, both on the dollar, the increase, and what it would be relative to the debt and getting out of that.
And do we have any estimates as to what that would do to next year, that following year?
That's what we, yeah, that's what we have.
What did the consultant recommend, like 8, 5, 2?
And by the third year, we were going to be...
Flat or like a rate of inflation?
Close to flat.
Okay.
Isn't that what he said? And it would be self-funding from that point on, I think?
Well, then I'd say, you know, I'd say, one, I think, I mean, there's so many factors. One is stretch that out instead of making it this hit.
Right, right. I think we all agree with that.
So, let's do that. Two, see what from the CIP can be shifted to the right, which, I mean, we did as much of that as we could in the short time we had from when the report came in to, you know, put it, having to put the budget in its final form. Three, the bond proceeds that Amanda and Keith have identified.
We saw that, yeah.
And then four, I know we're not there yet, but healthcare conversation. You know, we've, we've been working really closely with our folks, you know, they estimated the 14% increase in the cost of healthcare this year. We were able to work really hard to get that down to 6. Keith and his team were able to, and Jeannie were able to get that down to 6, and then we've got some thoughts on how we can tighten that up even more, which has a real effect not only on general fund, but also on water sewer.
Right. On the CIP, if I remember, the changing of the meters was a huge number, and we, there was a question about whether we could physically do that.
Right.
Right.
In one year. So if, if we could, could we make, maybe make it the judgment to push that into two phases, or three? I, I don't know what the, I, I wish Mike could answer, what's the capacity, what's our capacity to install?
Not.
Not. So, then the question is?
He's got them split now, I think a million and a half, and a million and a half, we might, as long as you can get a good, an equal contract, when you're buying powers, it's good.
That's what I'm saying.
Three to five hundred thousand a year, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we should do.
Slow it down a little.
Yeah, let's, let's do, let's do that and plug it.
See what happens.
Well, it's, uh, that's not, that's, that was out there, it was in like years four and five at CIP.
I thought it was in years, I thought it was sooner than that.
Yeah, I can pull it up, yeah, yeah, as far as CIP is concerned.
Don't feel bad, Jack, half the time I feel like I figure out how to save money, it's like ten years from now. Oh man, but when will we get there?
Give you something else.
Kids will be in middle school.
I figured it out, then, every time, every time I've been asking, like, when does our debt really start hitting, it's always four years from now. I can't figure out how that happens, but.
Well, it's actually like, was it almost twenty nineteen? Like, five years from now, it's twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
It's twenty twenty-four, I think, when we actually, that's when stuff starts coming off.
Right, that's why, we were, we had that discussion, I asked, I said, when does this, when does this start to come off? Twenty twenty-four.
There they are, right here.
Yeah.
Is that the way it was?
Yes. It's how I remember, you know, I, I don't remember seeing it differently.
I guess maybe it's what I wanted to see.
Yeah, it's out here, but still, it's, it's, you know, it's good to be thinking about what's ahead.
So you've only got? Oh, that's the, the well.
There's the totals there. You can see, these are the big years.
Yeah.
But the good news is, we, we were able to accomplish everything that we wanted for nineteen, and with no debt.
Right. They have two.
So those are the values, two percent would have a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar reduction in revenue, and three percent, three forty-two, four percent, four fifty-six.
All right, so can you go to capital projects? Water Sewer?
Yep. There we go.
So revolving funds, two sixty-five, Pago, three sixty-one, right?
Right.
Reallocation, ninety-five, bonds, so bonds, seven fifty-five.
And that's gone now, cause we made the adjustment.
That's the thing that Amanda, we're good.
So, so then I would say, can we, can we dig into Pago and revolving, four fifty-one, and pay for those things? So, so we're good on bond, so, you know, I think we need to look at, should some of those get shifted, before, you know, before looking at operating accounts and things that are gonna be a little tougher to figure out.
Would it help to plug in like a two percenter into the worksheet and see where we are, to kinda?
Let's see what our use of?
See what our use is, and see how, see, see how comfortable we are.
Well, I don't know, it was my thoughts, well, well, hold on, so.
Cause we already had an eighty thousand dollar reduction in debt service, that would pay for eighty of the two, the two hundred and seven.
Yeah, okay, all right. I mean, I, I don't know, counsel, you know, what you all think, but I'd plug in four and start working.
I, I would do four. I don't think you can, cause what, all you're doing is, you're pushing, you're pushing out, and it's not.
Do you wanna look at four? Plug four in and see, see what that looks like?
Plug four in.
Let's do it. Okay, so what, what we've got now is a use of two million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Are the eighties in there?
Yeah, the eighties in there.
Yeah, two, one, six, nine.
Is it possible, Keith, to look at what an additional use of three sixty-nine does to? The revolving funds?
Not here in, in just a few minutes.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we work on that, and we can get the other guys to do their thing? We don't have to resolve it, but if we can get the information out this afternoon, then we can look at it again, because that number.
So, I mean, I, I think the, the one thing to consider is, it's.
We added four fifty-six.
It's a trade-off. You know, it's, it's trade-off, yet it's an increased use of surplus, and the whole goal is to.
And you're just pushing, all you're doing is pushing it, but I think that.
But I think it's an acknowledgement of, we're gonna push it.
Right.
And do it slower, and maybe use a surplus.
I think what we need to do is see that it's blown out.
Right.
The way that we talked about the other night, get the whole picture, and see how far it shifts to the, to further, to the right. It's probably gonna be a couple of years.
Yeah, we don't have in our possession the.
The model?
The model, yeah.
I'm sure we can get the model, can we?
Oh, yeah.
Or get him the.
We can send him and fire him off an email.
Yeah, why don't we do that, and have him, and have him do that, that, that way it's the same model exactly.
You got it.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. We're gonna go now to field ops, and then we'll come back and revisit that when we have the whole of the data. Field ops, you're up, come up to the table.
Somebody's gonna kiss me at the end.
Okay, it's not quite the back of my head.
It's in my face.
How's everybody?
Doing well.
Good. All right. The floor is yours. You haven't done this before, so.
No.
A little bit of an overview, in general, and then if we have any specifics, we've got, I'm curious if that's, no, this is not all for you, but we've, we've looked at the thing ahead of time, and if there's any questions, we'll ask you once you finish your, and talk, please, about critical items.
Well, the, one of the main things that we did on the administrative level was to try to reorganize some of the accounts, there was a lot of money in one specific branch, rather than having it distributed amongst the branches for each of them to, to use, so that was one of the things that we tackled this year.
Yeah, Amanda explained the process, so it was kind of a.
It's a big process.
Big project, yeah, yeah, yeah. Any significant changes relative to that, that we should, we should be aware of in more, in looking at the numbers?
We did add some accounts that didn't exist, for example, the office account wasn't even created in a lot of the branches, so we added those, shoes, safety shoes, I think a safety account, there were several that were kind of a mandatory account for the function of a branch, that we tried to add for all of them, to be able to track their spending more as well.
And you're confident that the ones that you ended up with are all yours?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I guess we're confident that we've captured all the individuals that, there was, there's nobody missing in the rework. Okay. All right.
In general, though, the account changes did not result in increase, if at all minimal, it just creates more accountability on each department, as opposed to getting it out of one fund. We had an increase in personnel in field ops of one park maintenance worker, that you can see in your spreadsheet.
If we'll finow that, we actually wanna make sure, if I'm correct, Julie, on the account.
Mm-hmm.
It seemed like it was put under four thousand, it should actually be four, five.
Zero, zero, zero.
Zero, zero, zero.
What page are we on for that?
You talking about the, the new, the new park work?
Yeah.
Yes, under F and O.
So, we, we've got that transfer up here, then, moving it from forty thousand to forty-five thousand?
That is correct.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, we'll take care of that, that'll just be a finance adjustment here, I can log that in, we've got that.
The dollars are there, but it's in a box.
Yeah, we're just gonna move it from one to the other. Thank you.
If I can just add, just something to, you know, there are gonna be a lot of these notes, to keep track of over years, but the one thing I'd suggest that we acknowledge this year is that the request was for a greater increase in staff and for parks maintenance, and looking critically at the schedules as this team has done, I think it's absolutely justifiable, may not be a full one, one year, but I think it's something we gotta continue to think about, taking bites out of, as we, as we move forward in the next couple of years, I think that's a team that's gonna need growth, in order to, to achieve the level of maintenance that we all think is appropriate.
Increased events, you know, with the marathon, National Folk Festival, and other, other events come about.
And a lot of special projects, you know, you know, frankly, these guys have been working really hard at, and it's not just parks, it's, you know, it's, it's everybody, it's the whole team, but, but, you know, everything from the Christmas tree to, you know, Transformational Thursdays, just trying to polish the city, you know, just trying to keep marina installation and improvements, and it's a long list, and, and frankly, the list of things we want done is even longer, and so I, I think it's important, there's a huge payoff in terms of how the city looks.
And they are taking on more projects that in the past, we would have contracted out, but we're looking at ways to save money, and we've got the skills, but the time, and other things are backing up, just cause we don't have enough staff, but.
And the reference, the park, the Parks Master Plan is the guiding for the activity level.
For the City Park.
For the City Park.
Yeah, and, and there's a conversation that needs to be had about that, too, because there's a kind of a long list of, of additional maintenance things that need to be worked into the rhythm, and then even slight improvements that aren't, maybe weren't on the radar of this Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee when they were creating that, but, but some other things that, you know, we've thought about recently, just, just maintenance things that, you know, can be, can help with some of the erosion that we've seen, and they've been out there, you guys have been out there working on it. Yeah, I just think, from a, from a personnel standpoint, this is gonna be probably a growth area in the future.
Looking at the numbers, it's, it's pretty much flat.
Otherwise.
Otherwise.
Other than the position.
Right. Okay, any other, any other question? That was my, that was my, those were my questions. Mr. Ruda, so any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. I forgot to tell you, he was on the.
I was wondering.
That's what it was. Yeah.
I didn't know that either.
He's on the road, he's on the road.
Hey, Artie. Hey.
All right. Okay, I think that's it, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Keep up the good work, please.
Yeah. You know, I don't know if you know, they did all the prep work at the amphitheater site?
Yeah.
Save us a ton of money, so, they're doing a terrific job.
Thank you guys for getting here, so we appreciate it.
Been out there installing the bike tracks.
They look good.
Yeah. We're trying to get to some.
I was just out. It sounds like it's come home. Thank you, Bill.
See you. Okay, next up is HCD.
For the record, Everett doesn't want the comfy chair. I decided to take it.
I don't wanna get too comfortable, you know?
I offered to light a fire under the seat, just to, you know, give him a hot seat, but it didn't work out.
Welcome, Everett.
Thank you.
Good to have you. You too, Theo.
Thank you. I was about to really.
I didn't, I was just gonna let you hang for.
See how long it took me.
All right. Just so everybody knows at home, it's like a hundred and forty-two degrees in here right now.
I need a chart, man.
All right, floor is yours, guys.
Okay, you wanna start, I'm gonna start. I'm sorry, essentially, essentially, most of the department structure and everything's gonna stay the same, there is a conversion of a code enforcement officer into a service position, and essentially, that is gonna help with our contracted cleaning, the cleaning leans for doing contracted services for weeds, rubbish, and things of that nature, hopefully to try to reduce some costs there. Those are probably some major expenditures that city outlays initially anyway, and then we try to recoup through billing, but it's, I think this position can help probably reduce those costs, and, and there's also the addition of a neighborhood.
Relations.
Relations manager that will help oversee the community centers and some of the community projects that are done with our AmeriCorps personnel, so those are two new positions really in there.
In, in terms of the cleanup, what percent, do we do all the cleanup, or do we do a percentage, or do we just farm it out?
We, we've been farming that out, the majority of that's farmed out, and then done by contractors that we get billed, the city actually pays them, and then we fill the services out and try to keep that money on the, on the back end.
If you turn to page seventy-six of the.
If you turn to page 76 of the analysis, not the detail, oh, the account, sorry, account number is 25200, and then the specific accounts are 523620.
Almost there.
Sure, take, no rush. So if you go to the bottom of the page, you'll see weed cutting, rubbish removal, and then the next page has board up houses and vehicle towing. Those, as you can see, are all, are kind of our, it's one of our biggest costs, and that's where specifically Everett was talking about the reductions that we'll be making to those accounts and in exchange bill for the services that that new person will be doing. So in the process, that should save some tax money as far as what the city has to put out and hopefully collect back, as well as we'll be able to hopefully reduce the cost of what we're billing for those services.
So the homeowner and the property owner benefit substantially. I mean, I don't know what an average bill is, but I mean, they can charge hundreds of dollars to mow your lawn. The contractor can.
Yeah.
And this, by doing this, it would be a fixed Salisbury fee.
Previously, we had numerous contractors that charged different prices. I mean, some, depending on which contractor got assigned to which property, you could actually get a higher bill for the same, basically the same work. Hopefully, what we can do with this service position is create a more consistent, besides billing, a more consistent service for it.
Does that increase our exposure?
You sure?
No, that's...
Technically, technically, the people that we hire are agents of the city, if I'm not mistaken. So at least when we were looking into this season of management, it's the same in terms of our liability, but I'm not positive that was just, you know.
I mean, that would make sense. I mean, we, you know, we send people onto private property to do other work. The cost to the property owner, I think, is one of the advantages. The other is the group that just left, they've requested multiple parks maintenance workers. This should not be a parks maintenance worker, obviously, but part of what the parks maintenance workers do is any property that the city has ended up owning through receivership or, you know, in the neighborhoods, which are quite a few, the substations, you know, anything that we own, and the list is thirty, forty properties long. We have to mow the grass, and they do it. So the idea would also be that this person would take on that.
Yeah, I mean, this person, as far as the liability, most of the work that would involve actually touching somebody's house is probably still going to be contracted out, and we're probably, we're going to aim most of our attention probably towards the rubbish and the grass, which is probably a lower risk because you're not actually touching somebody's house.
Okay.
And the other increase associated with that is on page 77. You go down to object 534302, there's a request for nine thousand dollars of equipment for the variety of needs that we'll have. You know, again, all of that is almost entirely offset by the reductions in house board ups and weeds and all that. So, yeah, reduction of eight thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty, yeah. We're reducing our other costs by about fifty thousand dollars. So between that and the, you know, what we'll be charging, it will be lower, as the mayor said, it will be lower, we're charging the homeowners and property owners, but between the reduction of fifty thousand dollars and what we'll be charging, we will recoup those costs within the first year.
This shows the reduction is, let's not read this wrong. AmeriCorps is going...
Oh, yeah, I didn't know. Do you want to switch to that?
No, I'm just saying that that's still one of the questions that I had on my list.
Yeah, so the AmeriCorps amount, I've got to find it. I think that...
That's like down eight, it's almost half.
Yeah, so we do need to make a, here we go, we do need to make a council-level adjustment because you'll see under AmeriCorps, it's eighty-six hundred. I supplied them with the wrong numbers, and that's my fault. The, we are eliminating a halftime position, and the halftime position is sixty-five hundred, whereas the full-time position is eighty-six hundred, and that was my mistake. So we are combining the youth civics council in with the youth development specialist.
So what did we budget for?
We budgeted sixty-five hundred, but it's supposed to be eighty-six. So just the numbers got reversed.
We budgeted sixty-five...
Eighty-six hundred.
Yeah, so the difference is two thousand one hundred dollars.
In the...
And what account was that in?
That is 25200. Jack, did you have it?
Five, yeah. Five, six, nine, two, three, five. But that, that shows... Did you have one and a half?
Yes, we had one and a half.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so we...
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
We are eliminating the halftime position, and overall, we will have citywide in addition of half an AmeriCorps person because the mayor's obviously getting a full time as well.
Gotcha.
Field ops.
Field ops, okay, sorry.
Sustainability.
Sustainability, yeah.
Okay.
So can we please put a pin in this topic, though, and come back to it? So we are, we have the two people who have been working on the AmeriCorps work, working on our youth work.
Right.
And we'll be down one. And, you know, some of those things can be consolidated, some of the, some of the past work that we've done for a long time, but with all the new work that we've, you know, planned on and are planning on, we made a cut, you know, knowing that one of the current occupants, Amber, is actually term limited with AmeriCorps, she can't continue with us. But I'm not sure it was the most prudent cut, and then we did that at my level. The department asked for the position, and we didn't fund it. I'm not sure it's the most prudent cut, so I'm just wondering if we can't come back to that maybe later today or...
Put it on the list.
Could put it on as a follow-up.
When we do our sort of summit at the end, we're...
And I don't want to put any words in Theo or Everett's mouth, so... Do you have anything you want to add?
I do want to say that Amber really has been doing a fantastic job. We expected a lot of her, and she was very unfamiliar with our office environment and some of my antics, and she really has stepped up.
In a good way, right?
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully. No, just I can be very scattered, bring. And she really, between the on-the-table initiative, the, you know, just taking a couple, a couple of the things, the on-the-table initiative, the bus stop stuff, I mean, she really has been engaging the community in a way that we haven't before. And I actually, All American Cities put out an email blast recently telling all cities across the nation about how great the on-the-table model was, and we, Amber had already found it and was already doing it, and last night was the third one.
Yeah, I attended, it was...
Yeah, she said it was good, and it looks like we have a little leftover money, we have a fourth one as well. So, I mean, she's just been thinking about things in a different way that I've really enjoyed, and she makes fun of me, so I appreciate that. But, yeah, it has been, has been a valuable asset.
She seems very dedicated to the cause, which is motivating her to, her efforts, and everything I've seen from her since I've been down in the office has been very, you know, top-notch work with, you know, very little play of what she's doing.
The thing, the thing was impressive last night is there were a bunch of us older people there, and the students that were there, and they were students from all different levels, and they were very quiet when we, you know, they were looking at us, and then Amber was able to draw it out of them and challenge them, which is something I don't think we could, the rest of us could have done.
No.
Because they lived it, you know, and there was discussions on bullying and cyberbullying, on fighting in schools, et cetera, and it was pretty interesting discussions, and they were very honest, I thought, so that, those, you can't put, it's hard to put a value on that kind of service that she's able to do, so...
And on top of that, I forgot to mention, she is working on changing her schedule to allow herself to be working on Saturdays, to hopefully allow for some programming at Truett Street on Saturdays, something she's been working on, what Andy, he isn't here, but he would be able to talk more about it as well, because she understands that there is a need for other community groups that want to utilize that space, but because of our staffing and everything else, you know, it's not something that we can, you know, for instance, have a field ops person come in on a Saturday to unlock the place or to, you know, keep an eye on everything. So, and Andy has been great with working with her in terms of getting all those agreements together and everything, so the two of them have very good relationships.
When's her term yet?
August 31st.
Of this year?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just adjusting to the next.
Yeah.
So do we have any plans as far as her as an individual?
That's kind of what I'm getting at, and I'm sorry if that was indirect, you know...
Just slightly, we got the best.
I wasn't, and frankly, you know, nothing's a given, so I'm not trying to make it about the individual, however, you know, what, what the, what her supervisor and what her department head are saying is, you know, to us, and they've said it, is, you know, we put that in the budget for a reason, you know, there's, there's a performance level that is, that to us screams, we need to keep her, and there's a conversation that needs to be had, and I think, I don't want to say, you know, I can certainly tell you, I didn't disagree with that one, I'm not ignoring that, but, you know, decisions had to be made, tough decisions had to be made. We saw, oh, terms ending, and, you know, I guess we'll just swallow that bitter pill and say, oh, well, and, you know. Now, you know, thanks to that being, that reminder being given to us, you know, we're saying, man, maybe we ought to take a look at it again and have a conversation about it with council, so...
We did not discuss this before, just so we know, but I, when I saw that...
You were thinking...
I was thinking...
The same, yeah.
That was, you know, part of my concern, I know she's a valuable asset to our city, and she did a lot of great work for the city and stuff she does on her own as well.
Sure, so we can't, you know, we can't continue her as an AmeriCorps position, but we could certainly have a conversation about how do we continue that work, you know, and even with that incumbent.
How do we continue that work?
Yeah, I think three things that I'd consider, and this is, this is just, you know, if I get any of this wrong, you guys correct me, but three things that I'd consider, one, that neighborhood relations, neighborhood services work, can and ought to be building a cadre of connections across the city in terms of city services connecting to the neighborhood leaderships, you know, wherever that is, and where it doesn't exist, starting to build those relationships. So that would handle, that person would handle the neighborhood walks, all of that. Certainly, they'd need help, need some support, but neighborhood walks, managing that type of work, you know, even the on-the-table potentially, you know, those community conversations. But then the youth work, you know, the community centers plus supporting youth development advisory committee and youth civics council, I think some of that can be handled by a full-time AmeriCorps, but it's, I think it's more than that.
Yes.
I really do, so I don't know if that's another halftime position, but funded fully by the city. I don't know if that's a full-time position, fully funded by the city. I think we'd really need to, you know, maybe workshop this for a half an hour, an hour, you know, all sitting in here and kind of writing out everything we're thinking about, or maybe even give Everett and Theo and Amber some time to go and write down kind of all the hours that they think might need, and say, here's our proposal.
That would help us when, you know, like, we've done this before, we put things on to return to.
Yeah, absolutely.
And at the last minute, we can make some, we can make some changes, but it might come down to choices.
Yeah.
But I understand the purpose of having community centers, and there has to be some staffing and stuff, because I think it's going to be something that, once we get one, there's going to be a need for them, and, you know, we're not just building it to sit there.
Yeah, right. And even to your point, start to add up, like, you know, community centers, staff coordination, even if we're trying to stay arms-length from programming a little bit, you know, just staff support. Now, maintenance sure is a field operations thing, but staff support from a, you know, people are going to have questions and, you know, what can I do, can I do, contract management, because we've signed contracts with each of the entities in Truett Street, so, I mean, contract management, right now, that's up at the executive office level, Andy's doing it, but all of that work. The youth sports, Doverdale and cyclocross and softball, the youth summer employment program, I mean, all of that could kind of be shepherded through the youth team that...
Amber is doing summer employment, we are doing...
They've taken a record number of applications for that district, too.
How many, roughly?
So we had a little over sixty, so...
Hundred percent increase from last year.
Well, it turns out my numbers are a little off, it is close to actually what we had last year, because GD had the wrong numbers, but, or I misunderstood what she was saying, maybe. But still, we are, you know, it is something, we're reaching a lot of people that we wouldn't normally be reaching, a lot of people through Facebook and that sort of thing. And for the numbers of that position, you know, one option is to have a contracted position. I mean, I know that's not something that we always, you know, are a fan of, but if we did put the civics council and the current youth development specialist positions together, you know, last year we spent about fourteen thousand, so with FICA, if you're looking at, you know, kind of a thirty thousand dollar mark, which is roughly what other organizations seem to pay for that, you're looking at an increase of about eighteen thousand to get to that thirty-two.
That's the kind of thing you're going to have to bring to the, to have our discussion and provide the...
I'm a little ashamed to see her, her doing such a great job, and then her charm ends in August, and it's just like, you know, she, I'm going to say she would probably look at it as if, I'm not going to say it was in vain, but, I mean, somebody putting their heart into something like that, especially for youth, that's very much needed here in Salisbury. So I would hate to have to see her go, because she is very adamant about what she does, she's ongoing, she's persevering, and the youth love her.
They do.
They love her, so, you know, I mean, if there's any way that we could find a position available for her, even as a youth advisor, Salisbury youth advisor, less, you know...
We've got it on the return, too.
Yeah, let's...
And let's do your homework and get us, get us some data and... When is your next?
So, yeah, I have a question, if I may. What sort of data can we expect to see to quantify the work that this individual's been doing?
We can try to gather together kind of a number of interactions, we can get some Facebook data, number of events that are being held, attendees of different things. You know, there's, there's no, you know, it's not an easy position to quantify, but there's a number of different data sets that we can bring to you.
Okay, I look forward to seeing it. I've reached my destination, so I'm going to have to leave the meeting at this time. But thank you, everybody, for humoring me, and I'm sorry I can't be there physically.
No problem, Hardy, thanks very much.
All right, glad to be...
Good night.
Thank you.
Well, we have, the final adjustments are scheduled for May 22nd.
So is that...
That's usually when we go over the list.
It was May 8th.
No, that's, that's the third, that's the other, that's the other session if needed.
That's the if needed.
That's the if needed.
It'd be, it'd be, it'd just, whatever it's worth, it works better if you were prepared, if we had all of our data and we, and we could, we could say, we don't have anything else to do, and we cut it, it gives us more time to host it and process it and all that.
So you prefer to do on the if needed?
I would say we prefer it because it opens, but it's not necessary. I'm just saying if it, if it works for everyone.
You're saying you prefer if that discussion, those sorts of discussions happen on the 8th instead of the 2nd?
It would be, it would be better. It would be, it would be better, I think, and then, when, especially if they kicked in, you need more time, in other words, suppose you get in there and something else surfaces and you want, and you wanna talk again, sure.
You could even.
Cause then you'd have to go back again, and we, and we're running out of time.
You had to cancel the second but keep the eighth.
Right.
And if you do finish, you're finished, if you're not, you can keep going.
Yeah, hopefully, if we do it on the eighth and everything's taken care of, you can finish the twenty-second and just go to the twenty-ninth.
Right. So, so two things then, uh, Theo, if you can kinda try to quantify.
I mean, I've, I've already got the salary numbers, so.
I meant quantify.
Oh, yeah, Hardy's.
Some of his, uh, some of Amber's impacts, some of her impacts, um, and then, uh, yeah, if, if you all can quantify not only the salary um, piece, or not only the expense side, um, but um, sort of quantify kinda the hour justification of, you know, the wide act position, or the AmeriCorps position that's proposed, um, and then potentially her position as well, how much spill ever into a second position there would be, and I, I don't mean to subordinate one to the other, cause I think a contractor or a full-time person would probably be the more senior.
Right.
You know, but, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we could, I guess what I'm saying is we could also eliminate both AmeriCorps positions to save money, is, is another option, you know, it would be an increased workload certainly, but, you know.
And just make it a one.
So both, so youth civics council, pretty, cause if we're gonna be having a neighborhood relations person who can take on some of the walks and uh, probably, probably even assist on the table, then that frees up some more time for that, that staff, staff person to do either civics council.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's where the increase of those contracted will maybe be about eighteen thousand. Versus last year, not, not proposed. Um, so are, uh, is it okay if we switch to homelessness, if, or are there other questions related to?
Nope, I don't have any of them.
Twenty-five, twenty-one, okay, the homelessness amount, um, is, oh, I guess, do you guys wanna talk about soldier and neighborhood housing or anything like that, any of those that fall under our? Or, I meant the.
What is SNHS funded?
They're getting thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty?
Which is what we did last year.
We're boarding with the listeners.
Well, we have, oh, are we, is there still another ten thousand that we've given them yet?
So it's April, so May, June, July, there's likely one more payment.
Oh, okay, um, and, and one possibility is also, um, this is probably more of a citywide discussion, but uh, you know, having some type of stats associated with that, um, cause I don't think we're currently getting those.
Stats associated with it.
Oh, the, the grants that we give out to Chipman, Neighborhood Housing, Food Bank, Community Garden, Lower Shore Health.
Well, yeah, community garden line is, is organized this way, but community garden line is paying our water bill.
Oh, oh, okay.
And code, uh.
Well, yeah, code, I've got those stats.
And, and I'm fine if, as I've said before, if code was organized differently too, if code was organized in, um, uh, PD.
That's, well, that's where it was originally, but uh, PD requested to send it out.
Seventy-nine.
Yeah.
Of course they did, so, um, SNHS, Maryland Food Bank, Chipman, um, you know, as you know, we have dramatically cut our community promotions, well, you speak community promotions, and we've got some pieces lined up here and some in, um, business development, um, and I think, uh, I mean, we, we have said that we want, this is, sorry, this is a broader conversation, but we have said in the past that we want, um, you know, access to their budgets, accounting if we ask for it, you know, audit reports if we ask for it, I don't know that we've ever pursued that, um, but, you know, the whole philosophy and I, I'll, my philosophy of wanting to get out of the grant-making business is that, you know, our, our budgets are tight, our taxpayers', you know, budgets are tight, uh, you know, when somebody can provide a service better than the city can, and we can pay for it, great, you know, and that's what I see is, you know, the code partnership is doing with the Health Department, Sheriff's Office, and State Attorney's Office, um, that's, you know, and that's exactly what Arts and Entertainment does, but we have a contract, we have, we do get access to their audits, we do get access to their budget, you know, we are their primary funder, so, I think, you know, with all the others, uh, I, I think it's a reasonable thing to ask, I'd also just, I think we should acknowledge that for a small grant, you know, um, like for uh, Lower Shore Heritage Council or Chipman, we might not expect much information in return, for a larger grant like SNHS, we know what impact we wanna have, um, and, and I think they can tell a good story about what they're doing, especially from the uh, uh, housing counseling standpoint, you know, financial counseling, things that we, getting people into homeownership, things that we can't do, we don't have the capacity to do, but that we strongly encourage and want, um, I think that might be a reasonable request, at least to get a report, um, to the city council, I mean, if they could provide a report, hey, here's how we're using your money, um, that would be, that would be really good, and maybe that could be done even on a regular basis, like to, um, the, uh, housing community development department, and they could share that report to all of us.
And all it has to be is like a one-sheer.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's more than fair.
Just a third.
Even a presentation to the council.
I think it's more than fair.
Or a presentation to the council.
We're just not.
Cause then it, then it becomes public right away.
I said, okay.
That's a good idea.
It helps them too, helps them talk about what they're doing.
Absolutely.
Just to clarify, uh, Theo, you said it was the same as last year, thirty, but last year was at forty?
Yeah, I was reading actual.
I figured you were in the other column, yeah. I just wanted to clarify that for the record and make sure nobody was confused by it.
Yeah, no, I just read actual as opposed to virtual. Okay, um, so uh, if you turn to page, uh, let's start with three hundred and fourteen.
Three hundred and fourteen?
Yeah, we're going to operational transfers.
Oh, you're going into the detail sheet?
Oh, sorry, uh, this is, yeah, uh, detail, I believe, not.
Hold on a second.
Bore analysis and that.
Yeah, I gotta switch over, hold on.
Oh, sorry, no, I, yeah, that is the one that I have, yeah, detail, sorry.
Okay, three hundred and, three hundred and what?
Yeah, I forgot, I printed out uh, details of the analysis.
Which book?
The detailed, uh, the one on the right of the, the one that was sent to us.
I have it up on the screen there in a second if you.
That's, that's easier.
It went there.
So there's a, yeah, that's right, um, there's just a couple things that, you know, we've done in previous years, um, six hundred dollars for a transfer for youth civics council, uh, um, scholarships, either, it's depending on the coordinator, but either two, three hundred dollar scholarships or three, two hundred dollar scholarships, um, and, uh, well, community development projects, twenty-two hundred dollars, um, actually, I'm not sure about that one, is that annexation fees that are going in, Keith, do you know a hand?
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, twenty-two thousand, sorry, not twenty-two hundred, um.
That's some type of grant match, I'd have to go pull the source documents to the idea.
Not, not sure about that one, and then fifty-one thousand dollars, that's uh, the match for COPS grant, um, in addition to uh, about three other grants that are in Schedule C, um, we, we did not have to put in as much in police grant match because uh, the police department currently has, has one person funded through that grant, um, as opposed to two, so there's been a bit of a reduction in uh, in the expenditures this year, and thus necessitating a lower match amount this year, so, saving money, hooray. Um, and then turning to page three hundred and fifteen, just the next page, um, our request for Housing First is ninety-seven thousand, three hundred dollars, um, and then, uh, Keith, I don't know, are you able to get up our Housing First request, Excel spreadsheet that shows the projected growth? Uh, I think any of them have that, yeah, um, it would be, uh, no, one over, yep, that one, um, scroll down a little bit, um, so the way that we have created this program is we, expansions are funded, uh, with new grant matches, however, those grant funds really only last one year, um, because of the nature of, of the funding and, and the regulations, um, so if you see below there, we, you know, as I, as you know, council originally appropriated seventy-five thousand dollars, um, we got nearly thirteen thousand dollars in grant funding, um, because that was our first year, you know, it kinda got us a little, it was a little slow getting up and running, um, so the next year we only need seventy-six, um, and then twenty-five thousand, um, for, is how much we got in grant funding for FY-eighteen, um, so you'll see there, there's a bit of a lag in terms of when that grant funding catches up to us for liabilities, um, so we are putting in uh, another request for funding of ten thousand dollars, um, for new funding, however, we expect that to kinda get cut in half or at least a quarter, um, so we decided on, you know, having, still having growth, but having a bit of a slower growth model, because we still are catching up with the previous amounts that we've requested, um, so that's how you get to, you know, that eighty-nine thousand dollars that we're requesting, um, however, the total request is nine, ninety-seven thousand dollars, um, ninety-seven-three, and that's because we have a contract right now with the Health Department, that if someone has Medicare, which uh, does not cover case management, that we in turn pay the case manager for them, we are uh, currently applying for additional grant funding to add a second case manager position, which would then uh, take over that case management funding, um, so we have put in a request of thirty thousand dollars for ESG, um, and potentially there's some CDBG money and also some resource navigation money, um, that we are trying to put all that together to create that second position and, um, thus turn over some of that case management to us, um, in order to reduce the, those costs, and so I know that was a lot, so I don't know if you, I just tend to ramble.
I get it.
Couple, a couple of questions, um, as the, as this process continues, um, and I'm not sure it's applicable, but in the beginning, I guess there's some low-hanging fruit. Right, and as you get, as you go further, as more, the more success you have, is, is it a safe assumption that the more difficult, the harder it becomes?
In terms of the.
Time of.
Uh, the, well, you're talking about in terms of the difficulty of the people that were housed, or the cost savings associated?
Yes.
I, I would say it's a mix, um, because there are certain individuals that we thought were going to be really nice and easy to work with, they were completely compliant the entire time we're working with them, and they were not that way once they were housed, um, there are other individuals, um, that, you know, one individual in particular who is very psychotic, um, she thinks I'm the son of the devil, and, uh, and she's, she's been great, she's been one of the best clients in our program, um, so.
To be fair, there are people who are not psychotic that think that about them.
Yes, yes, that is true, that is true, um, it's not, it's not the first time that I've heard that, um.
So what you see is, may not be what you get.
Yeah, exactly, um, I, I mean, as far as cost savings, uh, we, we certainly have not gotten to all of the uh, most high-costing homeless people, um, some of those, we, some of those individuals, we have kind of, I, I wouldn't say saved for later, um, but maybe they've been resistant to initially getting housed, either because they didn't believe us, or because they were kind of content where they were, um, and then they start seeing their friends getting housed, or in, you know, in some ways their neighbors if they're in a tent up in the county, um, and that kind of increases their, their interest. Um, we, we, we are very proud that, uh, the, we have had, we have not necessarily had a reduction in homelessness overall, but that's larger economic trends, but within the population that we're serving, uh, those high-needs, unsheltered individuals, uh, we have seen a reduction in that in terms of what we, what we usually judge as the cold weather shelter, um, so the cold weather shelter has between thirty and forty beds, depending on the church, um, and typically the individuals that are in there are those that are unsheltered, um, they're not those that would normally be going to a shelter or otherwise, um, last year, most churches had to turn people away at some point, this year there actually were a couple times they had open beds, um, so that, that was, that's kind of really what we were trying to achieve, that's, that's the population that we've been targeting, um, and we have had a lot of success in that, um, I mean, I, as we did at Dunkin' Donuts, you know, panhandling is still a problem, but, you know, almost everyone at Dunkin' Donuts's panhandling is actually not homeless, um, you know, both Christine and I have interacted with them, and they are, they are certainly not homeless. One of them notes that on their sign, you do not mention that they're homeless, they just say that they're in need, um, so, so, yeah.
And if I can, um, you know, that sort of work, uh, the work on panhandling, and even our str- city strategy with signage, you know, encouraging people to donate, you know, to various organizations instead of giving cash, um, you know, we're talking about how to, how to better, you know, a more, more broadly strategize, the other thing that, um, I'll note for April and Bureau in particular, uh, is the group of five individuals that were sitting on the other side of the river, on the steps by the riverwalk, um, you know, I, I spent time talking to all of them, and all of them know Theo and Christine well, uh, they're all clients who have worked with them or are not yet housed, and, um, you know, so I think you have tougher conversations, uh, when, you know, you, you explain to somebody who's homeless, uh, you know, here's, here's the situation, and we do have options available, and if you're in any other small city in America, you wouldn't have those options, um, and, and it's not for everybody, because it's not unlimited, um, right now there are thirty, and there's not gonna be sixty automatically next year.
Right.
Um, and that's, that's tough a little bit, but at the same time, we have people who are on city staff, you know, who are there all the time, who have a relationship with the homeless population and are interacting with them, and are trying to give them services, and what was interesting is one, one guy wanted to walk with me after, and we talked, and Julia and I walked.
Can I walk time out real quick? He said he was really cool, by the way, the guy said you were really cool.
Okay, well.
He was like, that man was really cool.
Well, some, some people don't know what they're talking about, no, that, um, but we had a, we had a nice conversation, and, um, you know, one of the first things he said once he got alone and we were walking was, you know, so I live in Princess Anne, and, you know, before that he had presented, hey, I'm homeless in Salisbury and I need, I need housing, and what we know is, we are solving a Lower Shore problem, and solving all of it, solving it completely, is A, maybe impossible, and B, something we probably eventually need to talk to all our partner, uh, cities and towns and counties nearby in being, standing there with us.
Definitely.
Doesn't mean, you know, Princess Anne or, you know, Snow Hill or Berlin has to figure it out, but maybe can be part of a, a cooperative or collaborative effort, um, that, that's the sort of thing that I think, you know, elicited for me from that conversation. The other thing is, transportation was his major, he was asking Julia for bus tickets, um, for short transit tickets, and, and there are programs that, you know, short transit has some discounted tickets that they make available, and that we've even talked about selling through, uh, finance downstairs, or maybe, um, business development across the street, visitor center, so, I mean, there are, there are a lot of things that we can do on multiple fronts to continue to help the homeless, uh, but yeah, I think the challenges getting into this work illuminate themselves as you push further toward the edges.
And, and we do, we do have some bus tickets, which we were able to give him, however, we, we do restrict that to individuals that have like a legitimate need or concern or can show some type of documentation, um, but, uh, but it's not, that, that service is for a very specific clientele, you know, there is a larger problem of transportation unaffordability, um, so, you know, we can't solve that either, um, by any means, um, and, uh, just from yesterday, from the Maryland City County Managers Association meeting, what a mouthful, um, I was preparing the PowerPoint, and it looks, and my rough estimates are that our program over the past year and a half, two years has saved about over fifty thousand dollars, um, between a variety of different services, hospital, Medicaid, uh, our own police costs, everything else, um, so, as I've said repeatedly, you know, we, we are saving the county a lot of money, um, in terms of reducing their detention costs, um, that, that probably second to, uh, to the possibility of psychiatric inpatient is the most expensive thing, um, so we, we definitely are receiving, uh, seeing savings. So we, we definitely are receiving, seeing savings. One of my goals is to get an econ intern to actually, or I guess an econ and social work intern to interview our clients. To get like a really thorough analysis of, of how much they were costing beforehand and how much they're costing now.
That's a, that's a great metric to start tracking once you figure out if all the components are legit.
Right. And the, the last thing that I'll mention with regards to homelessness is our outreach resource navigation program. Which is what's funded with CDBG and local management board, which is state money that flows through the counties. Since April one, Christine and I, but that is overwhelmingly Christine, has seen two hundred and two individuals. That are either homeless or housing insecure. Before this, I, I tried to go through those that are literally homeless, so those that are in a shelter or on the street. And it's close to a hundred and twenty. So, so you're looking at in three months, Christine has seen like ten percent of the entire Lower Shores homeless population. Which is a sizable amount. I, I, it takes a lot of time to actually go through that and compile all the outcomes. One of the reasons that we are looking at a second, second position is to kind of increase some of those outcomes. Because we have had a lot of luck referring those high needs people to other permanent supportive housing programs. So people that have disability and are literally homeless, I think we've made twenty referrals probably. That would not have been made if we did not have this service. But those that kind of fall in between are always the hardest ones. The single moms with, with multiple kids that really require more intensive, long-term work. Which is what, you know, Christine's position was not exactly designed to do. It was designed to be, you know, kind of brief, to, to get people. You know, there's been many times, because of our relationship with the police, where the police will call, someone will be unsheltered. I remember when Christine first started, there was a mother and a son that got kicked out of what they were staying. They had nowhere to go. The police called all the shelters. None of the shelters would allow them. So they ended up letting them sleep in the lobby. I think it was Officer Sigmundson, she's great. And, and the next day, you know, Christine was able to get them into a shelter. And now they're in Village of Hope. She has a job and they're doing very well. So that's really, you know, what this, what this is trying to target where, you know, kind of this brief intervention to get them out of this immediate concern. But, but you know, those, those more complex cases require more, more time. So it's definitely been a, you know, I expected this to be a service that was in need. I didn't expect it to be quite this level of need. But, but Christine's also been doing a kick ass job. So is Nancy. I'm really lucky. I just want to say that.
Any, any other questions for Theo?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And we'll, yeah. This is crunch time. You're getting down to the nitty gritty here. But keep up the good work. Tell Christine the same thing, please. But it's really, it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Thank you.
The, the only thing that, you know, we just alluded to the fact that Princess Anne, you know, when you get a reputation for helping people. You're gonna find out there's more people than you thought. And that's something we have to, as you said, we may have to go out and say, hey, listen. We don't mind doing this because it's the right thing to do, but by the same token, you need to get on board with us and help and pull your fair share.
And I want to be clear, the people that we've housed have been from Salisbury. You know, we, we haven't been housing people from Princess Anne. It's just in terms of providing services. I just want to clarify about that.
And those figures that we have about-
It's about thirty people.
The clinically homeless figure. That, that figure, I mean, that includes all of the Lower Shores.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yep, no, thank you for letting me ramble.
Thanks for stepping up.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Cool. Oh, we didn't go to community centers, did we?
Oh, community center operations.
Do you guys want to go to community center operations?
Quickly.
Okay. Just, I think we budgeted a total of about thirty thousand dollars for the two community centers. That covers electricity and maintenance, repair, that sort of thing. That was quick.
The, yeah, but now you have a question.
Perfect.
New Street.
Timeline, remember something?
Yeah.
Bring your mind. Can you get that in? So we, actually, do you wanna, do you wanna talk about that? In terms of the bids or do you want me to take, take that on?
That is performance review. Growing fan.
I, I attempted to assault the mic.
Yeah, so we used our IEIQ, Bignell Watkins Hasser, um, architect firm out of Baltimore. Did the designs. They came up with a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar plan for renovating that. Very large house. Which I think you could build a new house that size for.
Two of them.
Two or three of them.
Two or three, potentially, yes. So, so looking at, looking at those figures. Amanda and her team spent a lot of time whittling that down to, and we're closer where we were originally targeting like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so what it may mean is not doing certain pieces like the third floor right now, which are really tough to get to from an accessibility standpoint, anyway. But we're still looking at, so it's in procurement now. The construction of it is in procurement. We're still looking at.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, yeah, the construction is with Michael.
Oh, okay, cool.
So that's just gotta go out. You know, so probably sixty to seventy-five days from now at, at longest, because it's a thirty day open period, thirty, thirty day bid period. Will be out for, so probably early summer, we'll be awarded. Come through your, come through council early summer. And then construction done, we're looking into August. So the, the goal is to beginning of the school year, open. What it means is because we're not gonna be open at the beginning of the summer, which we had never really targeted for, but, you know, there was some holding out hope. What it means is that the Summer Lunch in the Garden series will continue this year. But in the future, they'd like to move it into the building and do, you know, kind of some stuff outside, some stuff inside, connect to the garden. Use the kitchen in the community center and cook for the kids in the neighborhood. And teach them how to cook.
Good.
Now, could I ask a question? Are these gonna be the only two community centers in Central?
As you probably recall, the plan adopted by the council is for three. The three neighborhoods that were identified in the strong SVI neighborhoods plan. Were the three with the highest concentration of poverty, the highest concentration of juveniles. The least accessibility from a walking standpoint to any school or other facility, other community facility. And it's the West Side, it's the Church Street neighborhood, and it's the Smith Street, New Street area.
West Side?
Yeah, like-
Like the Hilldale Avenue?
Yeah, California.
Okay.
Yeah, West Side.
Okay, okay. Because when you said West Side, that-
You think of West Side, yeah.
That-
Yeah, you could describe West Side as the whole West Side, everything.
Yes, yes.
But most of that's not Salisbury.
No, I know, I know. I do know that, but I'm just saying, you know, when you say the West Side. I just wanted to know, you know, exactly where it would possibly be. I know you don't know exactly where, but where the possibility of it being.
Right. And the, the funding that went in the budget in two thousand seventeen that we're still using that money from was just for two. So we'll, you know, we'll need to have a conversation at some point about money. Yeah. When we're ready to pull off some further. I think getting this open will help. But it, you know, we've heard a lot about different options around there, like, you know, people talk about how walkable Pemberton Elementary is and things like that. From, you know, First, Second, Third Street, Delaware Avenue, it's, it's a hard walk to, for kid, for little kids. Cross, have to cross Parson's.
To cross, yeah.
Something inside of the, the Parsons Fitzwater, you know, curve is, and that was the geography that was mapped out in the plan.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think myself, but I will, we'll talk about it.
Anything comes to mind?
Yeah.
Because I think we actually may have some, in the one-on-one conversation.
Yeah, I was just talking with W about that this morning.
There, there may be some funding sources out there that we can tap into to make it happen sooner rather than later.
Can I jump in real quick specifically? So one of the problems with that neighborhood specifically is finding a usable building that can be converted. Because the, if you just look at that area, you have Sandy's shop, which of course is being occupied. And then the, the warehouse across the street, the GNI is using. If you go across the way, you know, you're looking at the old Greyhound bus station that I think you guys at that one point ruled out. And the old McDonald's. I mean, that's, that's about it. So you're, you're fairly limited in terms of where on the other side we, we got lucky. Also, there aren't any large houses like, like in Newton or some of the other areas.
So what about the old McDonald's? Is that?
Uh, I mean, that-
The building itself is probably fine, but accessibility again, having kids gonna cross the highway.
Well, either where they go, they're gonna have to go across the highway.
Well, if, well, but potentially, however, remember that the plan adopted had specific catchment areas that it was designed for the kids in those neighborhoods. That were, were the highest concentration of kids living and not having access to a water pool school. Now that being said, over there, the only, the only thing about that McDonald's building is it is shown as gone in the other plan that overlaps there. And both of them are adopted plans and they don't necessarily, they do talk to each other because that's not where it would show a community center being. But you could have a community center that was part of the new development. However, you're just talking about a lot of money.
Yeah, I'm not supposed to be like the other one.
But if there was anything existing. Problem is on the, on the hill, there's not, there's not a brick building that exists for that. Although, who, does GNI own that warehouse?
Yeah, they do and they use it and they refuse, they, they're not intent on selling it.
Okay.
Does that, does that-
You have enough of mine?
We had, I didn't say that.
Unless it was something that was in, you know, great condition.
Why Jack's still looking, right?
Uh, yeah. So, so April, let's talk, let's talk about it.
Okay.
If you got any thoughts on that.
Well, we'll talk, we'll talk. I don't want to hold this up. Jack's not gonna let me.
I was reaching for my travel bag.
Not use that. You'll be fine.
All right. Thanks. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
It's been fun as always. It's nice, man. Thanks for that. Thanks for having me.
All right, where are we? We have lost Mike. Now it is. Okay, we're back with the final department of, for today. And we'd like to welcome Laura Soper, Business Development. The floor is yours, my dear. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time, everyone. I'm sure you guys all have a copy of my budget. It's pretty straightforward. I'm here to answer any questions you have about our goals, priorities, essential items. We kept pretty level funding this year, so the floor is yours if you have any questions for me.
Would you like to hit the highlights?
Highlights being, let's see. Like I said, most of it was level. We had a few requests for increased and increases in funding. Our institute and gallery saw a one thousand dollar increase. Yeah, I'm going through this. That was one of them. The SU Entrepreneurship Competition that we participate in annually. Annually, we funded. That the past three years, we've been utilizing a, I believe it's a HUD grant. And that will be completely utilized by this year. So going into next year, we're fundling, funding that at two thousand dollars. I believe this may have been the only essential item that went through. I know funding went through at the mayor's level for Lower Eastern Shore Heritage Council and the Chipman Center.
What page is this on, do you?
It's on page fifteen.
Page fifteen to seven. I, I thought I saw it moved up for me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. On this one. Congratulations. You're the only, the only one to have a question.
Maybe not. It might not have been for me.
But I think Mira's got four or five.
So we are, we are putting in the budget, the revenues from the visitor center now. So we won't have to be doing-
No, I think we can.
We can't?
I think that that's what they said. There's an issue with, what was the issue? We couldn't put it in the budget to automatically do it? We still have to come up with a transfer because it's a budget?
We could budget enough. We budgeted more money.
We could budget more money for the appropriation based on the, the anticipated revenue. So just knowing that we are anticipating more revenue than, than what we did in the past. We can increase the appropriation for the expenditure at the beginning of the year. So whatever we estimate that we're gonna need to buy the amount over the course of the year, plus a little contingency, we should appropriate that. And then we're good. We won't have to come back.
Is that the way we've done it?
I've done budget ordinances whenever I have. Yeah, we haven't done that yet.
So we could, we could increase that to an amount that's more in keeping with what we estimated to be for the year.
You don't spend unless you make it, but yeah.
Yeah.
The only problem with this year.
At National Folk Festival.
There's a National Folk Festival. Let's wait till next year.
It might be easier to do. Fans is big.
No, it might be, yeah, because that, that'll blow it out of the water, I would think.
Well, we know what's going on there.
Go ahead.
I'm thinking the fiscal year nineteen compared to where we are actuals for. Yes, you know, we're in eighteen right now. Where we think we're gonna be projecting for eighteen is where we could calibrate for nineteen. But we're gonna probably, it's, we're probably gonna exceed it. We could project high and fall short.
But then all we would have to do would be to put the, whatever the sales were for those three that, that following week, we could do one. For just that amount, right?
No, the sales just, we'll just let them go into revenue and then if we have an appropriation at the beginning of the year, that's gonna hopefully get us to the end of the year.
So put the average, what you're saying is put the average in based on the current rate and then-
We could adjust.
That's fine. That's the only way you can do it.
Just knowing it's a placeholder that we don't want to spend money if we haven't made the money.
Right. Okay.
If you're good with that, I, I, I could have Laura, you could just email me tomorrow what you think it should be kicked up to. And I'll stick it in as a finance adjustment down at the bottom.
Yeah, all I do is take care of the exception.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then anything above and beyond would be a budget ordinance or-
Unordinance. Before we said unanticipated revenue could go on the consent agenda, somehow this got, it got off the consent agenda again.
Ordinances don't go on the consent agenda. Because they have to be read in full and that's totally not worth the consent agenda.
We've had this discussion.
I know, but, but I, at one, at one time he approved it. I must not have been there when he disapproved it.
I wasn't there either.
Yeah, that's all right. It's, it's apparently it's been traveled. It can't be.
That's what it is.
Keep moving.
Yeah, keep moving. All right. Any other questions, April?
No.
Laura, that's the shortest one we've ever had. Thank you.
Will star for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything that we missed? General questions? Now, according to the calendar. May seventh is the public hearing. And then we said we're gonna meet on the eighth, correct? To make the final adjustments? That what we said?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
When are you gonna, what, in the morning on that, on the-
Eight-thirty? Eight-thirty. And honestly, that, that meeting should not take more than an hour, I would think. And then, uh, the twenty-second, we may not meet. And then Tuesday the twenty-ninth is D-Day. Right? And we'll be, we'll be finished. Yes. Oh, yeah, that way they all know when we're watching or listening. Yeah, I think that's it.
Do you want a, a quick summary of what he sent us about the effects of the four percent?
Let's do that. They got back to us already with the four percent, which is good. And then Keith is going to send it out through Kim.
She's got it, yeah.
And then we'll have it so that we can look at it.
I see. So what you'll see is a slide like this, and you could try to compare it like that. I'm going to make it a little bit easier and just take one at a time. So I'm going to jump over here, and you can see the operating reserve. It, it, at eight percent, it, the reserve was met at the year, fiscal year twenty-one. This would push that forward by two years, it would be twenty-three. So that was its effect on the operating reserve. Looking at the next guy. You can see, first of all, the rate differential for the average quarterly bill. For nineteen, it meant seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Savings were thirty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents is the differential for that first year. But you can look at the other data there. And then CIP funding. We had, uh, it's the same deal. The bottom is as it's currently at eight percent. The top is at the reduction of four percent. And you can see less funding is available to be done from cash in these years. You can see down here, we're doing more from cash. So it's going to, this would result in more borrowing. So you can see here more clearly, this is the borrowing versus where we would have been here.
For the, for the sake of controlling the increases, the impact. Why, and you know me, I would like to get there quicker. I think we need to get there quicker in a sane manner. So, please send that to us, and then we'll get a chance to look at it, and then we'll discuss that on the eighth, and we should be in good shape, okay? I want to thank all the department heads for coming and being prepared. And Keith and the, and you guys did a great job. We're almost there, but we've got a little bit, a little bit to go. And Mira said it the other night, and I'll echo it, that it's getting easier every year because of the presentation. And the setup is much, much cleaner.
Next week, or, or whenever you want to talk about, uh, something about the healthcare changes, we potentially talk through that. And then we still need to come back to the four fifty-seven match conversation, unless I missed that. I don't know if you want to do that now or next week.
We'll do it on the eighth. We'll do, we've got three things on the eighth. We've got the Wurms, we're finished, the match in healthcare.
And, and Mayor Day's, uh, Mayor, Mayor Court position.
Right, yeah. That's the return, yeah. I think that's the, if I'm not mistaken, that's the only.
Stuff that was.
Stuff that we put on the.
It's on this list. We do have a, a donation that has to, has to come off, so it's an adjustment to fifty-three thousand six oh seven. See where, where we are.
Good, thank you, everybody. We're finished for today.
Thank you.